I would also like to remind you that delegates should deliver their speech at a moderate speed that allows for its interpretation and ensures their message is conveyed clearly and accurately. Delegates participating virtually are reminded that to ensure appropriate sound quality for the benefit of participants and interpreters alike, proper equipment and connection must be used. The minimum requirements for remote participation are a USB-connected unidirectional microphone, headphones, a strong and stable internet connection, and a quiet location. Please be advised that where sound quality does not allow for reliable interpretation or poses a risk to the interpreter's auditory health, they will suspend service. Please send a copy of your oral statements in advance to the email address interpret@who.in. In terms of the order of speakers, the floor will first be provided to E B members, followed by member states not represented on the board and associate members. Then the floor will be given to observers, representatives of the United Nations and other intergovernmental organizations and non-state actors in official relations with the World Health Organization. I would like to inform you that in the context of WHO reform and in line with decision EB 13 brackets three, this session of the executive board is acceptable to participate via live broadcasting. The link can be found on the WHO website. Does the board agree to these proposals for the organization of work on the understanding that adjustments may need to be made in line with the progress of our deliberations during the day? I see no objection. It is so decided. Let us now decide on the timing of the meetings. I should like to propose that the board meet from nine thirty to twelve thirty and from fourteen thirty, sorry, fourteen thirty to seventeen thirty Central European time. If needed, provisions have been made for an additional session from eighteen thirty to twenty one thirty. I take it that there is no objection to the proposed meeting schedule. I see no objection. It is so decided. This concludes our consideration of agenda item two. Agenda item three, the health conditions in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. We will now turn to agenda item three, the health conditions in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. I would first like to give the floor to Dr. Tedris, Director General of the World Health Organization. Dr. Tedris, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Excellency. Your Excellency Minister Hanan Mohammed Al-Khawari, Chair of the Executive Board, Excellencies, dear colleagues, and friends. I think we all agree that this is a meeting we would rather not be having. As I have said repeatedly, I deplore the barbaric and unjustifiable attacks by Hamas on Israel on the seventh of October, which killed more than one thousand two hundred people. I'm appalled by reports of gender-based violence during the attacks and by the mistreatment of hostages. I'm relieved that one hundred fourteen hostages have now been released, and I repeat my call for the remaining hostages to be released. I well understand the anger, grief, and fear of the Israeli people following the horrific attacks two months ago. I also understand the anger, grief, and fear of the people of Gaza who had already suffered through sixteen years of blockade and are now enduring the destruction of their families, their homes, their communities, and the life they knew. Dr. Mike Ryan and his team will provide a more detailed presentation on the health situation in Gaza, but it's stating the obvious to say that the impact of the conflict on health is catastrophic. More than seventeen thousand people are reported to have died in Gaza, including seven thousand children. And we don't know how many are buried under the rubble of their homes. More than forty six thousand injuries have been reported. One point nine million people have been displaced, almost the entire population of the Gaza Strip, and are looking for shelter anywhere they can find it. But nowhere and no one is safe in Gaza. As more and more people move to a smaller and smaller area, overcrowding, combined with the lack of adequate food, water, shelter, and sanitation, are creating the ideal conditions for disease to spread. On average, there is one shower unit for every seven hundred people and one toilet for every one hundred fifty people. There are worrying signals of epidemic diseases, including bloody diarrhea and jaundice, and there have also been reports of high levels of diarrhoeal diseases and respiratory infections. The risk is expected to worsen with the deteriorating situation and approaching winter conditions. Gaza's health system is on its knees and collapsing. Only fourteen hospitals out of the original thirty-six are even partially functional, two north of the Wadi Gaza and twelve in the south. Only one thousand four hundred beds are available out of an original three thousand five hundred, while about two-thirds of primary health care centers are non-functional. The two major hospitals in Thousand Gaza are operating at three times their bed capacity, running out of supplies and sheltering thousands of displaced people. Meanwhile, more than one hundred eighty women give birth in Gaza single every day. There are two thousand patients on cancer therapy, three hundred fifty thousand patients with diabetes, heart disease, and hypertension, and at least twenty thousand civilians in need of acute psychiatric care, and many more are expected to suffer from severe mental disorders as a result of the conflict. I visited Al-Shifa Hospital in Gaza City five years ago in twenty eighteen. I toured the dialysis ward and the neonatal intensive care unit and spoke with health workers and patients. Even then, conditions were extremely difficult for health workers and for patients. Now, the work of the health workers is impossible, and they're directly in the firing line. Since the sevens of October, WHO has verified more than four hundred forty-nine attacks on healthcare in Gaza and the West Bank and sixty attacks on healthcare in Israel. Healthcare should never be a target. I also grieve the loss of more than one hundred of our UN colleagues in Gaza, including our own Dima Al-Hajj, who was killed alongside her six-month-old son, her husband, and her two brothers. In summary, health needs have increased dramatically, and the capacity of the health system has been reduced to one-third of what it was. WHO is on the ground in Gaza alongside our partners to support health workers who are physically and mentally exhausted and are doing their best in unimaginable conditions. By the way, today I have Rob Holden with us, who just returned from Gaza, my colleague Rob Holden, and our regional director, Dr. Ahmed Al-Mandari, and his team are also with us for any questions you might have. They can give you the firsthand account of the situation. Resupplying these health facilities has become extremely difficult and is deeply compromised by the security situation on the ground and inadequate resupply from outside Gaza. Humanitarian agencies are struggling to cope. The resolution you're discussing today, if adapted, asks me as Director General to do several things: to report on the public health implications of the crisis, to assess the extent of psychiatric morbidity, to strengthen technical and material assistance, and to strengthen our work with partners. But I must be frank with you. These tasks are almost impossible in the current circumstances. Indeed, it's for that reason that the Secretary General last week invoked Article ninety-nine of the United Nations Charter and called for a humanitarian ceasefire. I echo the Secretary General's call, a call I have made repeatedly myself, including during my report to the Security Council two weeks ago. A ceasefire is the only way to truly protect and promote the health of the people of Gaza. I deeply regret that the Security Council was unable to adapt a resolution on such a ceasefire last Friday. I know that negotiations on the resolution for this meeting have been difficult, but I very much appreciate the spirit of cooperation and compromise you have demonstrated, and I welcome your commitment to finding consensus. It's only through dialogue, mutual understanding, and finding common ground that we can ever hope to find a resolution to this crisis and to the many other crises in our troubled world. This year is our seventy-fifth year as WHO. The opening words of our constitution remain more relevant than ever, that health is a fundamental human right for all people and that health is fundamental to peace and security. I urge you to use this moment to fulfill that vision, recognizing as our founders did in nineteen forty-eight that there is no health without peace and no peace without health. So I hope you will use health as a bridge for peace. Thank you very much, and Chair, back to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tedros. Now I'd like to give the floor to the Secretariat to provide a technical update on the health conditions in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. Secretariat, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm reading for slides. Okay, thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and let me begin our presentation by also welcoming colleagues. DG has mentioned that we have a regional director for Emro, Dr. Abed Al-Mandari. We also have Rick Brennan, Regional Emergencies Director. We have our special representative to Israel, Michelle Tera. Online, we have the regional director for Europe, Hans Kluge, and we have Rick Peppergrin and his team in OPT on the line, and Dr. Peppergrin is currently in Gaza. We, as a staff of WHO, and as Director General has mentioned, make this presentation in honor of all who've lost their lives in this conflict, most especially one hundred and thirty-three colleagues in UNRWA who've lost their lives, and our dear colleague and friend, Dima Abdul Latif Mohammed Al-Hajj, who gave her life on the twenty-first of November, twenty twenty-three. Dima was the head of the Lim Reconstruction Center in Gaza. She had been displaced from the north to the south of the Wadi Gaza line and was being hosted in her father's house, a longstanding surgeon in Gaza. And she lost her life with that of her child, her husband, two brothers, and many members of her family and community. We are deeply, deeply, deeply shocked and saddened by her loss. I'm going to pass to Dr. Teresa Zagaria. Teresa is the incident manager for this crisis at Headquarters and the incident manager in the support team. But the work on the ground is led by our country team, by our country teams, our two regional offices. And we at Headquarters are really just pulling together all of the work that they have been doing with you, member states, with partners over the last numbers of weeks. I'm sure there are elements of this that won't be as comprehensive as you like. We will distribute the slides, and if there are other requests for more detailed information, we'll be very happy to bear further details of slides. Teresa, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mike. Excellencies, good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. If you could go to the next slide, please. In the last sixty days, the World Health Organization is monitoring the public health situation in Gaza, in Israel, in the West Bank, and in Lebanon. This technical presentation will outline public health impacts of the escalation of violence with a focus on Gaza, the condition of its health system, and illustrate WHO's operational plan and response measure. Next slide, please. As of seven December, WHO has recorded over one thousand two hundred fatalities and over five thousand injuries in Israel, over seventy thousand fatalities and close to fifty thousand injuries in Gaza, over two hundred and fifty fatalities and over three thousand injuries in the West Bank, and ninety-four fatalities and close to four hundred injuries in Lebanon. Next slide, please. And as of the sixth of December, one hundred and thirty-four UN personnel have been killed, and this includes our own colleague, Dima. Next slide, please. In Israel, the majority of the casualties are people who were killed during the seventh October attacks or died from injuries in the aftermath of those. Currently, over two thousand patients are treated in hospitals for injuries. Next slide, please. In Gaza, the trend of fatalities continue to rise, placing a tremendous burden on the already weakened health system. The largest proportion of fatalities recorded were among children, forty-five percent, and women, thirty percent. Save the children by end of October reported that the number of children killed in the three weeks following seven of October surpasses annual number of children killed in conflict zones since two thousand nineteen. From thirty November, there has been a sharp increase in overall daily fatalities. Next slide, please. In the first month of the conflict, sixty-six percent of fatalities were reported north of Wadi Gaza and thirty-four percent south of the line. It is estimated that more than one hundred thousand persons are not accessible in northern Gaza. There is no safe place in Gaza. Next slide, please. Over one point nine million people have been displaced as a direct result of insecurity and evacuation orders. This includes one point two million in hosted one hundred and fifty-nine UNRWA shelters. The overcrowding in shelters, coupled with lack of basic services, has resulted in significant risk to the spread of infectious diseases. Winter is bringing additional risk to health and the urgency of humanitarian assistance. An UNRWA colleague describes the situation as the houses are full, the shelters are full, and the streets are full. Next slide, please. WHO, through its active surveillance system on attacks on healthcare, has recorded and verified a total of five hundred and twelve attacks since the seventh of October. This has resulted in injuries to patients and healthcare workers, denial of healthcare, and physical destruction of hospitals and ambulances. I'd like to recall here that WHO's surveillance systems on attacks on healthcare does not have a mandate to investigate attribution of attacks. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The health system in Gaza prior to the seventh of October had thirty-six hospitals and seventy-two primary healthcare units. Currently, only one-third of hospitals are partially functional. Of the twenty-four hospitals north of Wadi Gaza, only two are remaining partially functional. So one more hospital has lost its functionality. Of the twelve hospitals south of Wadi Gaza, only three of those have surgical capacities. Functionality is limited by lack of fuel, supplies, food, and clean water. There are also now two field hospitals that are partially functional south of the Wadi Gaza line. An estimated ninety-four thousand liter of fuel per day are needed to cover the most critical hospital functions, and hospital grounds are also now hosting thousands of internally displaced persons. internally displaced persons. Next slide, please. About sixty percent of beds have been lost in terms of functionality. Patients and health workers are still reported to be present inside several large hospitals in the north of Wadi Gaza line despite their inaccessibility. One hundred and fourteen dialysis units are now lost from its function, and more than one thousand one hundred patients are treated in hospitals with very low to no power due to lack of fuel or direct impacts of the conflict. Next slide, please. About two-thirds of the Ministry of Health and UNRWA primary healthcare facilities have been closed, further impacting the access to and availability of urgently needed healthcare. Many of the UNRWA functioning health centers are reporting more than double in the increase of consultations while working with sixty percent of its original workforce. Next slide, please. Now into the public health risk analysis from the Gaza Strip. Critical public health risks are driven by inadequate access to healthcare and the living conditions created by the conflict. These includes a risk to pregnant women and their newborn babies in the absence of healthcare, the ongoing and future risk of those who have been severely injured and their opportunities to live a healthy life. Additionally, the mental health needs are immense. While we do not have the exact figures at the moment, we know from past experience that in situations like this, at least one in five people will need specialized mental health support. We also know that mental health and psychosocial support is a priority in Israel. Next slide, please. The conditions created by the conflict are increasing the risk of infectious diseases, spreading faster because of lack of water and hygiene, overcrowding, and being more difficult to manage in the absence of adequate healthcare. We are witnessing high levels of transmission of common respiratory and diarrheal pathogens and increased risk of severe epidemics. Signals of acute jaundice, bloody diarrhea, and meningitis were picked up through syndromic surveillance from the Ministry of Health Facilities and UNRWA facilities over the last weeks. And we are working to strengthen the capacity to detect, verify, and respond to epidemics. Next slide, please. WHO has put forward a detailed health response plan for the occupied Palestinian territory focusing on health services in support of the health system, public health intelligence and disease prevention and control, high-value supplies and health logistics, and coordination of partners. Next slide, please. What we have done to date includes multiple high-risk missions to hospitals across the Gaza Strip to assess conditions as well as deliver critical supplies, support the evacuation of patients from north of Wadi Gaza with the Palestine Red Crescent Society, and coordinate the deployments of emergency medical teams. Next slide, please. As mentioned, WHO is working to strengthen the capacity to detect epidemics and to respond to them. This requires timely communication and a minimum diagnostic capacity, which is currently lacking. WHO is working to strengthen the detection and response function and strengthen the laboratory capacity. Next slide, please. WHO and health partners are providing high value and specialized medical equipment and essential medicines. Almost twenty million US dollars of medical supplies have been procured, are in transit or distributed by WHO and partners to Gaza. WHO has established an online tracking system to ensure coordination and prevent duplication. Next slide, please. As of seven December, over three thousand trucks carrying supplies from different agencies have crossed into Gaza through the Rafa border crossing. Of those, twenty-seven trucks carried medical supplies from WHO and other partners. This is not nearly enough. Prior to the seventh of October, two hundred trucks a day were not even meeting the needs in Gaza. We needed five hundred trucks per day. And even during the pause, only two hundred and twenty trucks passed for one day. To meet needs, we require more crossing, and we're glad to hear that the Kerem Shalom border crossing may open. Next slide, please. We need for healthcare workers to be protected. The safe passage of medical evacuations and unimpeded access for health cluster partners and emergency medical teams is absolutely paramount to ensure humanitarian health assistance. Next slide, please. The United Nations is appealing for one point twenty-three billion US dollars. For WHO, we have received only twenty-nine percent of our ask and health cluster partners, even less. WHO released fourteen point six million US dollars of its internal contingency fund for emergency. We need urgently additional resources to save lives and protect the health system. Next slide, please. In conclusion, the health system in Gaza has been systematically degraded and is collapsing. The public health risks are immense, given the conditions created by the conflict, barriers to accessing healthcare, challenges in supplying hospitals, and ongoing attacks on healthcare. The health system in Gaza must be protected, supported, resupplied, and supplemented. People are dying from a lack of access to care and medication and discontinuation of care. Pregnant women, newborn babies no longer have the services they require, and mental health needs are immense. Access to healthcare through hospitals and primary health centers must be reestablished and expanded. The risk of epidemics is extremely high. Addressing the conditions that facilitate epidemics must be addressed through multisectoral humanitarian assistance. In order to save lives in Gaza, WHO and health partners require conditions to work safely and resources to scale up assistance. Protection of healthcare and aid workers and sustained humanitarian assistance are not possible in the current context. Let us hand the floor back to you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teresa. A pretty stark overview of the situation on the ground right now. There was another photo, there was another slide. I just want to, I just want to end with a little note of hope in what, in many ways, looks like a very hopeless situation. This is Dr. Ahmad Daher in Al-Shifa Hospital in a WHO-led mission, the first mission to Al-Shifa, which rescued a large number of premature babies. And this is, Ahmed was a clinical specialist to carrying the children before their evacuation to the south. Next. And there's Rob Holden, who the DG mentioned yesterday. Rob led that mission with Ahmed into the field, and this is Rob. Twenty-eight babies were evacuated to Egypt, and huge thanks to the government of Egypt for accepting and treating these very, very, very sick premature children. All twenty-eight of the children across the border into Egypt have survived. They're all thriving, and it was a poignant moment for our staff to visit and see those children living. I know it's a small drop of hope in a very big ocean of suffering, but at least it shows us that we can do it together, one at a time. N equals one. It's not a thousand, it's not a million, it's not eight billion. One matters on all sides in this conflict. One matters. Next slide. And with special thanks to our team on the ground in Gaza. In the middle there, you see Dr. Rick Peppercorn. I hope Rick is online and may be able to speak later. And on the left is Thanos Gargavannis, and on the right, Usam Abdurahman. There are many, many other staff on the ground from many different agencies. Today, we pay tribute to all of the humanitarian actors on the ground, NGOs, local, international NGOs, partners in the health cluster, our colleagues in the UN system, UNRWA, UNICEF, UNFPA, WFP, and across the board, our colleagues in ACHA who provided excellent coordination, our colleagues in UNDSS who've really done everything to protect the security of our staff. The UN is on the ground, the UN is doing all it can. But in the current context, it is, as the Director General said, almost impossible to continue delivering assistance and most especially scaling up that assistance in the current context of conflict. The space must be created to save life, and we hope that your calls today will create that space. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mike. Thank you, Secretary, and WHO, for all your efforts. I draw your attention to the draft resolution that will be considered under this item, which is contained in document EBSS slash seven slash conf slash one rev one. In the spirit of health as a bridge, in the spirit of humanitarianism, I would like to appeal to all of you. We have seen great efforts to come up with a consensus text. We all know that this text is not perfect. No text is. But let us focus on our ultimate goal, which is to protect the health of all civilians concerned by the situation and move forward with a view for it to be an instrument of health and peace. I will now open the floor for discussion. As agreed, I will now give the floor to Palestine and Israel for a five-minute statement each. Palestine, you have the floor. We will wait for a few moments to see if we can establish communication. So if you could please help us with establishing communication.
They unmuted me. Good morning, everybody. His Excellency Dr. Tedros, Director General of WHO, Her Excellency Dr. Ahnan Mohammed Hwari, Chief of the Board. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, I address you today in the face of an unfolding tragedy in Gaza where an unrelenting brutal war has persisted for sixty-five days, resulting in an unparalleled humanitarian catastrophe. The daily horrors we all witness defy international law and shatter the very essence of our shared humanity. As we gather in this special meeting, it is imperative to comprehend the gravity of the situation and take immediate precise actions to alleviate this crisis. Israeli military occupation forces have ruthlessly targeted every aspect of life in Gaza, sparing no one from new nates, children, and disabled individuals to schools, hospitals, shelters, UN facilities, and ambulances. Even the so-called safe corridors have not been spared, resulting in the loss of hundreds of lives and thousands of severe injuries for simply displaced individuals. In addition to detaining Dr. Abu Slima, the Director of Shifa Hospital, and his colleague in these what's called safe corridors, the blockade deprivation of food and water and deliberate targeting of civilians and medical facilities bluntly violate international laws specifically outlined in the Geneva Conventions. The devastating impact of this war is reflected in the loss of over seventeen thousand seven hundred lives, with a majority being children and women, more than seven thousand child and more than five thousand women, one thousand five hundred fifty families with multiple purposely killed members by Israeli occupation. These horrifying numbers do not capture the full extent of that tragedy, as thousands remain under rubble and over forty-eight thousand seven hundred are wounded. The urgency of the situation cannot be overstated. We call upon the international community and health organizations to take immediate and concrete action to hold this brutal war. Made provision of aid without addressing the root cause will only prolong the suffering of the Palestinian people in Gaza. The health situation in Gaza is catastrophic, with eighteen out of thirty-five of hospitals are partially functioning, seventeen of them are partially functioning because of the provision of limited fuel or medical supplies. Fifty-two out of seventy-two of health services are out of service. The Gazan medical community, despite facing immense hardships, remain dedicated to saving life. Critical shortages of essential drugs for the wounded population have been reported, forcing doctors to perform surgeries, including amputations and conduct C-sections, cesarean sections, without anesthesia, treating patients on the floor using mobile phones. Almost one point nine million people in Gaza, or nearly eighty-five percent of the population, are forcibly displaced. Nearly one point two million of these internally displaced persons are restored in UNRWA facilities. Another one hundred ninety-one thousand internally displaced persons are estimated to be staying in one hundred twenty-four public schools, hospitals, wedding halls, offices, and community centers. The rest are hosted by families or out and on the open near shelters. Due to the overcrowding and poor sanitary conditions at shelters, one hundred sixty people share the same toilet, seven hundred people share each shower unit, less than three liters of water available per day per person, which is ninety-six percent less than the recommended. Four hundred tons of garbage per day are accumulating without removal in the shelters of the camps, as well medical waste as hospitals are not removed. These factors lead to increased public health threats and the number of communicable diseases reported, more than one hundred twenty-nine thousand cases of acute respiratory infection, more than ninety-five percent cases diarrhea in children under five years of old, and fifty-five thousand cases of skin diseases, two thousand four hundred cases of chicken pox, and more than one thousand one hundred fifty cases of jaundice syndrome could be hepatitis. Dear colleagues, concerns have been raised about vulnerable groups of people who are struggling with difficulty who are struggling with difficult shelter conditions. This include people with diabetes.
Your Excellency, Minister, please, you're running over time. Could you please conclude?
Yes. Fifteen percent of people living in shelters are disabled. Fifty-five percent pregnant women, which, five thousand five hundred births per month, hundred eighty births per day, immunocompromised patients, and patients with chronic diseases, ten thousand cancer patients, and two hundred twenty-five thousand patients with hypertension, seventy-one thousand diabetic patients, and forty-five thousand cardiovascular diseases are still under treatment. The medical health and trauma inflicted by this war on children and the Gazan population and Palestinian worldwide are profound. In the West Bank, still we have also continuous aggression by the occupation. And until and since the seventh of October, at least hundred, at least two hundred seventy-four Palestinians were killed and about three hundred thirty, three thousand three hundred fifty wounded. In light of this, we urgently call for the following: immediate cessation of the brutal war in Gaza, unconditional and immediate entrance of humanitarian aid, including fuel, water, and medical supplies, along with allowing medical personnel into Gaza. Cease targeting essential services such as health facilities, medical personnel, water, electricity, and emergency services, UN investigations, and accountability to safeguard the Palestinian population from ongoing this brutal war. The international community must end impunity for Israeli occupying forces, holding perpetrators accountable for their brutal actions and crimes. Now in the time for decisive action, the world cannot stand neutral while innocent lives are lost and the basic rights of the Palestinian people are compromised. Let us unite in our commitment to justice and the protection of human rights and international law. At the end, I would like to thank Dr. Tedros and his team, Dr. Hanan and Dr. Mondary, and all those who were committed to hold this extraordinary session for Palestine. As well, my appreciation and gratitude goes for all those who are on the ground, especially the WHO teams in the headquarters, in Emre, and at the national level in Gaza. Thank you very much for supporting Palestine and helping the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you, Palestine. Israel, you have the floor.
Seventy-five years ago, on this very day, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was signed. It was born out of the ashes of the Holocaust, when six million Jews were systematically exterminated. It was born out of a recognition that the international community had failed the Jewish people. As evident here today, seventy-five years on, the Jewish people are still under attack, still enduring the brutality of antisemitism and the delegitimization of the only Jewish state. Today's session is the only session ever convened here in Geneva on a specific conflict. No special session was called on the health situation on Syria, Yemen, Sudan, or many other situations. Do the victims of this conflict matter less or does the world play by a different rulebook when it comes to Israel? The answer is yes. When it comes to Israel, there are different rules. Let me talk to you about what this session and the decision that will be adopted will not reflect: the reality. The reality is that on October sixth, there was a ceasefire with Hamas. On October seventh, we woke up to a new reality. Thousands of Hamas terrorists entered Israel and systematically tortured, mutilated, murdered women, men, and children on an unimaginable scale. They entered with one directive: spare no one, capture innocent people, rape women and girls. They directly targeted Israeli medical personnel, first responders, and ambulances. More than two hundred and forty people were taken hostage. One hundred and thirty-seven still remain in Gaza, including eleven-month-old Kfir Bibas and his four-year-old brother Ariel. Released hostages have described inhumane treatment in captivity by the hands of Hamas. Hostages were murdered and wounded hostages who did not receive any medical treatment. One can only imagine what the hostages still held in Gaza are undergoing in what is now sixty-five days of captivity. Since October seventh, over eleven thousand five hundred rockets have been fired indiscriminately at Israeli cities. It continues every day, hitting hospitals, schools, and residential buildings. This is the reality that many will omit in their statements today. In response to October seventh, Israel declared war on the terrorist organization Hamas. Our operation is directed towards Hamas. It has never been against the Palestinian people. And I recognize the suffering in Gaza. Let there be no mistake, however, Hamas is responsible for this suffering. Israel upholds the laws of war and is taking all feasible measures to minimize harm to civilians. But the reality is that Israel is operating against a terrorist organization which operates from within, underneath, adjacent to hospitals, schools, and UN facilities. Hamas has also declared its willingness to martyr the entire population of Gaza. It has encouraged people to die in their homes. It has shot and prevented civilians from moving to safer zones. Over one thousand missiles launched by Hamas have misfired and exploded in Gaza, killing many Palestinians. The Al-Hali Hospital is but one example. For years, Hamas has systematically militarized healthcare facilities, hospitals, and ambulances as a matter of strategy and policy. For years, Israel has called for the world's attention to Hamas abuse of healthcare facilities. Yet even after the scope and scale of Hamas brutality was exposed on October seventh, many in the international community, including the World Health Organization, continue to give Hamas a free pass. WHO has shamelessly reiterated that it only knows what is happening above ground in the Al-Shifa Hospital and not what is happening below. Yet ample evidence clearly shows weapons and ammunition inside hospital and hostages being brought through the main doors in broad daylight. And it is not just the Al-Shifa Hospital that Hamas has abused. Rantisi, Al-Quds, and many other health facilities have been used to hide terrorist infrastructure. So the question is, what did WHO know? The reality is that for years, many, including the World Health Organization, chose to turn the blind eye. In the face of Hamas' total contempt for Palestinian welfare and the diversion of aid for its service purposes, Israel continues to facilitate the flow of supplies for the Palestinian population. We continue to work with partners, among them Jordan and UAE, to establish field hospitals and with many others, on floating hospitals. Demanding that aid flow to Gaza without also demanding that Hamas release the supplies it has stolen from the civilian population is effectively rewarding this reprehensible behavior. So the question remains, what exactly does this special session aim to do? Why are we here today? This is not to say that the welfare of the Palestinian population should not be addressed. It very much should be. But this session is not the answer. The work that is carried on by WHO in Gaza does not require us to meet here today. It certainly does not require any decision. The work is already being carried on daily basis, including in coordination with Israel and with many partners. If this session serves any purpose at all...
Israel, may I ask you to conclude your...
It will only encourage Hamas actions. It gives them a green light to use Gazan as human shields and denies them the hope of a future free of terrorism. It is a carte blanche for Hamas to snatch Israeli children and babies from their beds. It is a reward for Hamas disdain for the sanctity of human life. The reality is, and I'm coming to an end, if we stop now, Hamas will carry out another October seventh. They say so publicly. One only needs to listen. Hamas will continue to plan murder, rape, and brutalization of the Israeli people while hiding behind Palestinian population. This is the reality. This is the reality that the decision today that will be adopted will blatantly ignore. We will continue to do what is right, in spite of this session and in spite of seventy-five years of rockets and resolutions and false moral equivalence. Israel will defeat Hamas and continue to protect our people. We will bring our hostages home. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. I will now give the floor first to EB members in the room. I shall give the floor to Yemen, followed by Denmark.
Your Excellencies, Minister, Her Excellency, Madam Chair, Director General for the World Health Organization. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the honor to deliver this statement on behalf of the Emre region. I wish to express our thanks and appreciation to the World Health Organization and he, Director General, for convening this special session. We would like also to express our thanks to WHO, its Director General and its staff and health cluster partners in the field for tireless effort to address the situation on the ground in Gaza Strip. And expressing appreciation to all humanitarian agencies and their implementing partners that are delivering lifesaving aid to alleviate the impact of the conflict to civilians. We also would like to express our sense of gratitude to health workers in Gaza who are dealing with the concerns of this conflict and stress that the best way to support those health workers and people they serve is to strengthen the existing health system. Emre supports the UN Secretary General and the Director General of WHO on activating Article ninety-nine of the UN Charter. We request that the Director General make a fileable staffing, financial resources, and leadership support needed across all the three levels of the organization for an effective and accountable humanitarian and emergency health response, including critical health cluster function under the leadership of WHO Emergency Program and in line of the relevant both executive board and health assembly resolutions. Furthermore, we call for an assessment of the impact on the conflict on the health sector in Gaza and with black boost back, including extremism. We express our deep concern for the catastrophic humanitarian situation with death of thousands, majority of them was women and children. Additionally, over one million people were displaced due to this conflict. The current situation due to the surge and magnitude of the intense damage on the public health sector that has on this date killed and injured thousands of civilian, majority of them children, women, and elderly, including our partner humanitarian and health worker. In addition, thousands of victims remain under the horrible intense overcrowding in shelter coupled with disturbed health, water, and sanitation system, and the lack of fuel do lead to increased spread of infectious diseases, including waterborne, airborne, vector vaccine preventable disease, and aggravating the humanitarian situation. Restriction of the movement of goods can affect food availability, contributing to malnutrition, while the limited availability of clean water increase the risk of outbreak and epidemic. And stressing that access to clean water and sanitation facilities is critical for maintaining public health. We condemn the attack on the healthcare, which was documented by WHO's surveillance system for attack in healthcare and demand an immediate case of any attack on hospital and healthcare facilities. We call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire that establish a credible peace process to ensure full, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian...
Yemen, would you please conclude? You're running over time. You have four minutes as speaking for the region, but please conclude. Thank you.
We call up an humanitarian, international community to demand a full respect of international laws that prohibit attack and threaten of any healthcare and also respect the right of health to all people in any conflict. And concluding, Eastern Mediterranean region renew its call to respect international humanitarian law and relevant resolution of the United Nations and demanding protection of civilian, civilian barbards those delivering humanitarian assistance. It is also called for an immediate, safe, sustainable, and embedded delivery of humanitarian aid to Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Yemen. I now give the floor to Denmark, followed by the United States of America.
Thank you, Chair. Excellencies, colleague, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states with regard to this special session and its outcome. The candidate countries, North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Ukraine, and Republic of Moldova align themselves with this statement. The European Union and its member states share deep concerns about the devastating humanitarian and health crisis in Gaza. The situation for civilians is alarming. The EU underlines the importance of immediate and full implementation of Resolution twenty-seven twelve by the UN Security Council, which specifically calls for international humanitarian law compliance by all parties, humanitarian forces, and protection of civilians, especially children. The EU will continue to call for further humanitarian forces and corridors to allow for unimpeded provision of urgently needed aid to civilians in Gaza, with the pro or loss of civilian life, including of humanitarian and medical personnel and over one hundred UN staff. The European Union reiterates its condemnation in the strongest possible terms of Hamas for its indiscriminate terrorist attacks across Israel. During these attacks, numerous accounts of the use of sexual violence by Hamas have been reported and have to be investigated thoroughly and swiftly. The EU reemphasizes Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law and international humanitarian law. The EU condemns the use of hospitals and civilians as human shields by Hamas. We welcome the release of first hostages from Gaza and commend the work of Qatar, Egypt, and the United States in this regard. All the remaining hostages helped by Hamas must be immediately released without any preconditions, and the International Red Cross and Red Crescent Movement must be granted continued access to them. We reiterate the importance of ensuring the protection of all civilians at all times in line with international humanitarian law. The fundamental IHL principles of distinction, proportionality, and precaution must be complied with in all military action. The hostilities are severely impacting hospitals and taking a horrific toll on civilians and medical staff. The EU emphasizes that international humanitarian law stipulates that hospitals, medical supplies, and civilians inside hospitals must be protected. Hospitals must also be supplied immediately with the most urgent medical supplies, and patients that require urgent medical care need to be evacuated safely. The EU is deeply concerned about the deteriorating health conditions, noting the near-complete collapse of the health system in Gaza and the devastating impact this is having on civilians, especially women and children. Civilians must be allowed to leave the combat zone. Humanitarian and medical aid workers must be able to do their work, which is to deliver lifesaving assistance. As winter approaches, humanitarian access at the appropriate scale to meet humanitarian need is even more urgent. IHL requires parties to allow and facilitate rapid and unimpeded access for humanitarian aid for civilians in need. All parties must also ensure the safety and security of humanitarian and medical staff and cooperate with the UN, International Red Cross and Red Crescent Movement, and humanitarian partners to ensure the timely relief of supplies to civilians wherever they are. The EU and its member states will continue to work closely with international partners, the UN, WHO, and other agencies, as well as countries in the region to provide sustained flow of assistance and facilitate access to food, water, medical care, fuel, and shelter, ensuring that it only... ensuring that it only reaches civilians in need. We welcome the significant efforts by W H O to address the most urgent health needs, including through provision of lifesaving medical assistance to hospitals, health workers, and patients. In concluding, the European Union has again increased its aid to Gaza, bringing the total to over one hundred million euros for this year. The EU member states have also significantly increased their assistance. We launched an EU humanitarian air bridge operation with several flights to Egypt to bring more than one thousand tons of lifesaving supplies to date to humanitarian organizations on the ground in Gaza. As a longstanding humanitarian donor, the EU will continue to cooperate closely with the U N and humanitarian partners in the region, in line with the humanitarian principles of humanity, neutrality, impartiality, and independence. The EU is ready to compute contribute to reviving a political process on the basis of two-state solution, including through the peace day effort, and welcomes the diplomatic peace and security initiative and supports the holding of an international peace conference soon. I thank you.
Thank you, Denmark. I now give the floor to the United States of America, followed by Paraguay.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, D G Tedros and your team, both here and joining us online. Excellencies, we would like in this body to remain focused on our shared goal of addressing health care needs in the region and to the greatest extent possible to avoid provocative political statements. The United States is heartbroken by every civilian life lost, whether they are Palestinian or Israeli. Palestinians and Israelis equally deserve to live in safety, dignity, and peace. The people of Israel and Gaza have suffered in this conflict. The United States will continue to do everything it can to alleviate the suffering of civilians and deliver lifesaving aid to those in need, and to emphasize to all parties the critical importance of protecting civilians in accordance with international humanitarian law. We appreciated the reports and insights from the D G and other speakers, which were sobering and very difficult to hear. We had hoped for a short, balanced, and focused resolution on supporting the health care needs in Gaza that could achieve consensus, but we can accept the Rev One draft as submitted. We appreciate the colleagues that worked to revise the original text, as we prefer to avoid voting in W H O whenever possible. We will be pleased to explain our position later in the agenda today. We also appreciate the leadership of countries in the region, especially the government of our Chair, Qatar, for their efforts to facilitate the release of hostages held by Hamas and other terrorist organizations, and the pause in hostilities that allowed increased humanitarian assistance to reach Palestinian civilians in Gaza who so desperately need it. We continue to support Israel's inherent right to defend itself against terrorism, consistent with international humanitarian law, to ensure a terrorist attack like October seventh never happens again. We are disappointed that the resolution text does not mention that Hamas's terrorist attack killed over twelve hundred people, the sexual violence Hamas has perpetrated, or that more than two hundred hostages were taken by Hamas and many continue to be held. The United States has been clear that civilians at hospitals, medical personnel, and patients must be protected, and we are grateful to W H O for its continued work to address the most urgent health needs in Gaza, including through the provision of lifesaving medical supplies. We have repeatedly stated that hospitals in Gaza must be enabled and supported to run effectively, including by ensuring fuel supplies for their lifesaving work and ensuring safe and effective evacuation routes when needed. At the same time, the international community, but especially members of this body, should join us in insisting that hospitals not be militarized or used to shelter terrorists hiding among civilians. We also recognize the devastating toll the conflict has had on humanitarian workers, with as of December eighth, at least a hundred and forty-four humanitarian workers, including from W H O, killed in Gaza since October seventh, and we deeply mourn their loss. We are profoundly grateful to the many humanitarians operating in Gaza at great personal risk, including UNRWA and other U N humanitarian agencies, for their steadfast dedication to saving lives in such challenging circumstances. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you, United States of America. I now give the floor to Paraguay, followed by Canada.
Señora Presidenta, gracias a usted y a la O M S por convocar a esta sesión. Es importante que como representantes los países miembros podamos tener un momento para analizar cuál es la mejor manera de cooperar en esta circunstancia sanitaria y por sobre todo contribuir a la paz. En todos los foros promovemos el diálogo y el debate y buscamos siempre la conciliación. En este caso, anhelamos un acceso a la salud universal sin fronteras ni excepciones y promovemos la preservación de los medios para obtener ese fin. Hoy estamos ante una causa humanitaria que afecta terriblemente la vida, la salud, y la infraestructura sanitaria en determinada región. La situación que vive la franja de Gaza nos apena profundamente. Vemos niñas, mujeres, ancianos, familias enteras sufriendo y trasladándose, colapsados, guarderías y hospitales destruidos. La población civil de Palestina ciertamente atraviesa una tragedia, nos afecta como país y como seres humanos. También hay una circunstancia que debe ser mencionada entre nosotros hoy acá e idealmente también en la resolución, y debe ser recordada de manera perenne, que es los miles de israelíes, también niños y niñas, ancianas y familias enteras, que hace casi sesenta y cinco días han sido exterminadas y secuestradas, y aún hoy permanecen cautivas al terrorismo, porque para el Paraguay jamás es una organización terrorista. Una muestra del compromiso con la solución de esta terrible situación y además de humanismo es la liberación sin demora de todas las personas secuestradas. Es decir, que miles de personas en Israel y Palestina que merecen nuestra protección están sufriendo en medio de un conflicto sin precedentes. La O M S se ha caracterizado siempre por su eficacia en el terreno, y para que en este caso que nos convoca se continúe por esa senda y la O M S pueda brindar ayuda y contribución y pacificación debe buscarse una acción concertada. Los miembros de este Consejo Ejecutivo tenemos la obligación de buscar un consenso, porque no hay nada más fácil y tal vez irresponsable que en este contexto aprobar las cosas por una cuestión de mayorías. Rescatamos que el primer borrador haya tenido referencias importantes a la rehabilitación y reconstrucción del sistema sanitario, habilitar corredores también internacionales, pero nos parece que ese borrador inicial de resolución no contribuye a la búsqueda del consenso, porque tiene lenguaje más propio de otros ámbitos, pero sobre todo es desbalanceado. Afortunadamente, han habido iniciativas que podrían encaminar un mejor entendimiento de manera a que lo que este Consejo reserva en esta sesión, que es la salud y los derechos humanos de todas las personas, tengan una acción concertada y por sobre todo acordada entre todos los actores hoy presentes. Nos ponemos a disposición para contribuir en la búsqueda de ese consenso. Gracias, Presidenta.
Thank you, Paraguay. I now give the floor to Canada, followed by China.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to D G Tedros and the W H O team convening us today. Excellencies, colleagues, today, the Oval Committee marks the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. It reminds us all of our common humanity and collective responsibility to protect the rights of each person. As the conflict enters its tenth week, Canada is horrified by the loss of life of so many civilians. It is not lost on us that we must continue to uphold our common humanity and collective responsibilities. All parties to armed conflicts have obligations under international humanitarian law, and we urge them to ensure that everything is being done to respect these obligations. The humanitarian situation unfolding in Gaza is tragic. We need to see an end to the violence. We call for renewed humanitarian pauses to allow for the flow of fuel, water, and humanitarian assistance. We know that much more assistance is needed to meet the ever-growing needs in Gaza. We are particularly concerned by the impact of the conflict on civilians, including aid workers and health care workers, as well as the impact on health facilities. W H O reports that the number of functioning hospitals has dropped from thirty-six to less than fourteen since October seventh, and that many hospitals are near collapse. This is also of grave concern. Amid severely overcrowded shelters, the spread of infectious disease could prove even more deadly than the violence of war. Medical establishments and medical personnel enjoy special protection under international humanitarian law. They shall be respected and protected and shall not be made the object of attack. We wholeheartedly condemn the use of humans as shields, which is prohibited under international humanitarian law. We strongly support the W H O and its efforts, and in particular, commend the dedication of all W H O staff and all humanitarian aid workers who are working tirelessly on the ground to deliver health care services under extremely challenging conditions. Aid workers, including health care workers, health care workers are not a target and must be respected and protected in accordance with international humanitarian law. The recent deaths of over a hundred and thirty U N aid workers, including one W H O staff member, as well as NGO, ICRC, and Red Crescent staff are heartbreaking. We must also recognize that Hamas's attack has had devastating impacts on the life, health, and well-being of Israelis, including those hostages remaining in captivity whose health conditions we have no information about. We continue to unequivocally condemn the brutalist terrorist attack perpetrated by Hamas against Israel, call for the immediate release of all hostages, and call for access to them by the appropriate and mandated international organization. Canada stands firmly with the Israeli and Palestinian peoples in their rights to live in peace, security, with dignity and without fear. We need to return to a framework that can best guarantee sustainable peace and dignity for both Israelis and Palestinians. I thank you.
Thank you, Canada. I now give the floor to China, followed by Brazil. And I give the floor to Brazil, followed by Switzerland.
Thank you. We would like to express our gratitude to you, Chair, for convening this chair as well as to the Director General, and also for the presentation that was presented. The presentation has highlighted the humanitarian catastrophe and the imminent collapse of the health system in Gaza, and we are gravely concerned about the loss of over seventeen thousand lives and the disproportionate effect of the conflict on women and children. Brazil also regrets that over two hundred attacks on health facilities and personnel have been conducted and the impact of the fighting on the operations of hospitals and other health care facilities. If nothing is done, untreated people will die in the coming days from lack of access to basic health services and supplies. We wish to recognize that many international organizations, including the W H O and its emergencies program, are doing a truly remarkable job in Gaza amid the harshest conditions to support the delivery of health care and supplies, as well as the evacuation of patients whenever possible. As we commend them, we also like to lament the disturbing number of U N staff killed during the conflict, including from W H O. The recent resumption of the hostilities has worsened a situation that was already unsustainable. Urgent action is required to change the situation on the ground, and the international community cannot stand still. That is why Brazil has requested, along other countries, alongside other countries, the convening of this special session of the executive board, which is a body with a mandate to take emergency measures to deal with the deteriorating health conditions in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. We'd like to call upon all parties to ensure that the civilian population is protected and has timely, unhindered, sustainable, and predictable access to health care and health supplies as well as to humanitarian aid. All parties should fulfill their obligations under international humanitarian law and international human rights law. We urge all sides to refrain from attacking health facilities and would also retake our call for safe and unconditional liberation of all innocent people, including hostages taken from Israel. We join the calls for the strengthening of the work undertaken by W H O in Gaza, including the assessment of the health situation and the technical and material health assistance to Palestinian people. We would also like to exhort the international community to support the rebuilding of the health system in Gaza, as well as the W H O health programs in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. With this in aim, we fully associate ourselves with the text of draft resolution contained in document E B S S slash seven slash conf slash one Rev One. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. I now give the floor to Switzerland, followed by Syrian Arab Republic. Thank you.
Madam la Presidente, merci pour l'organisation de cette session extraordinaire sur la situation sanitaire dans le territoire palestinien occupé. La Suisse est profondément préoccupée par la situation humanitaire et sanitaire dans la bande de Gaza. Nous déplorons la mort de milliers de civiles, dont de très nombreux enfants, en Israël et dans l'ensemble du territoire palestinien occupé depuis les actes de terreur perpétrés par le Hamas en Israël le sept octobre. Que la Suisse a fermement condamné. La Suisse reconnaît le droit d'Israël d'assurer sa défense et sa sécurité, et appelle à la libération immédiate et inconditionnelle de tous les otages. Madam la Presidente, la situation humanitaire et sanitaire qui prévaut dans la bande de Gaza est dramatique. À cet égard, ma délégation souhaite rappeler que les parties au conflit doivent respecter le droit international humanitaire, en particulier concernant la conduite des hostilités. La population civile doit être protégée. Que la mission médicale, dont les transports médicaux, les hôpitaux, les cliniques, les personnes malades ou blessées, ainsi que le personnel médical qui y travaille, jouissent d'une protection spéciale en vertu du droit international humanitaire. La mission médicale doit être respectée et protégée des attaques. Les blessées doivent être recherchées, recueillies, et recevoir les soins dont ils ont besoin dans les meilleurs délais. Qu'un accès humanitaire rapide, sans entrave et durable doit être garanti pour que les besoins de la population civile soient assurés, y compris l'accès à l'eau potable et à la nourriture, à l'électricité, au fuel, et aux services essentiels à leur survie. Actuellement, nous assistons à l'effondrement du système de santé dans la bande de Gaza. De nombreux établissements de santé ont été détruits et ont domagés, et le personnel de santé a déjà payé un trop lourd tribut. De plus, en raison notamment du manque de carburant, de médicaments, ou autres fournitures médicales. De plus, en raison notamment du manque de carburant, de médicaments ou autres fournitures médicales, de très nombreux hôpitaux et cliniques ont dû cesser de fonctionner en tant qu'établissement médico, et les patients, dont de nombreux enfants, ne reçoivent pas les soins dont ils ont besoin. Cela rend d'autant plus préoccupant le sort des milliers de blessés de la bande de Gaza. La surpopulation dans les hôpitaux et les conditions insalubres augmentent le risque d'infection, le développement de maladies et le risque de propagation. Nous notons également à grande inquiétude que beaucoup de personnes qui ont besoin de soins particuliers, comme les malades chroniques, les personnes souffrant de cancer, de troubles mentaux, les femmes enceintes ou encore les personnes handicapées n'ont plus accès aux soins et que la majorité des médicaments et fournitures médicales n'est plus disponible. Cette situation ne peut plus durer. La Suisse espère par conséquent que le Conseil Exécutif sera en mesure d'envoyer un signal fort d'unité pour s'assurer que l'OMS puisse contribuer conformément à son mandat à apporter son soutien aux populations civiles dans le besoin. En effet, la résolution devant nous contient des éléments importants, notamment un appel à toutes les parties au conflit de respecter le droit international humanitaire et protéger la population civile ainsi que la mission médicale, un appel à ce que tous les blessés puissent recevoir des soins adéquats et appel à ce que toutes les personnes détenues, y compris les otages, soient traitées humainement et reçoivent une assistance médicale. Prise de mesures sanitaires nécessaires comme les pauses humanitaires afin de garantir un accès humanitaire rapide, sûr et sans entraves pour les biens essentiels à la survie de la population, pour le personnel et l'équipement médical ainsi que l'évacuation et la recherche de blessés. Et enfin, une demande à l'OMS de mener des évaluations sur l'impact de la santé publique de cette crise humanitaire ainsi que les besoins en termes de santé mentale et de soutien psychosocial à toutes les personnes affectées. Madame la Présidente, je souhaite finalement saluer le rôle de l'OMS et rendre hommage au travail de l'OMS ainsi qu'à celui des acteurs humanitaires qui font leur travail dans des conditions extrêmes. Dans cet esprit, la Suisse s'est engagée à faciliter un texte consensuel focalisé sur la santé et le mandat de l'OMS. Le texte actuel REV 1 reflète selon nous cet objectif et par conséquent nous le souprenons. Merci de votre attention.
Merci la Suisse. I now give the floor to the Syrian Arab Republic.
谢克兰，主席。将要发表在这届国会 主席，卫生局的医生，哈森·拉扎什，迪马舍 如果阿什莫纳的妈妈的话，我会拿话筒来。谢克兰
Can you please connect us to the minister who will join us online, right? Your Excellency, please proceed.
主席， Dr Tedros The Director of the Qatari, Dr Ahmad Manzari The President of the Ministry of Health, Dr Hanan Kupari The Lords of the House of Commons, the Lords of the House of the Senate The Iranian Party, the Syrian Party is ready and ready to face the fierce, collective violence and the Israeli hysteria and the human crisis in Gaza and request for a swift and persistent stop of the fire and the rain to continue to help the health and the human services on a vast and extensive domain to reach all the people and the victims of the Palestinian people and to stop the Israeli attacks repeatedly by the health and other services The Palestinian victims' defense, especially in Gaza are asking us all to respond immediately and in a swift manner to stop the more and more of the victims the victims of the people and to continue to call for a stop of the fire and to prosecute the Palestinian victims from the Israeli, human crisis and the people who suffer from it until this meeting ends. Lords of the House of Commons, the Lords of the House of the Senate We hope for success in achieving our objective and the cooperation of the authorities here, and you have accomplished it. And the Palestinian people should obey their government's orders and the Holy Land's laws. 谢克兰
谢克兰 谢克兰，Syria. I now give the floor to Peru followed by France.
Thank you, Chair. Excellencies, colleagues. I want to thank the Director General of the OMS, Dr Tedros, for calling this important meeting and the Mr Mike Ryan and his team for the presentations on the sanitary emergency in the Palestinian territories occupied. Peru has been one of the members of this executive council that requested the call for this urgent and necessary meeting. We would like to express our most heartfelt condolences and solidarity with the affected families without distinction of nationality or creed. On the other hand, Peru praises the compromise on the land of the United Nations the global organization of health personnel the Office of the United Nations for the Palestinian refugees in the next area the International Committee on the Red Cross and all the humanitarian actors who are doing a notable work in these difficult circumstances. Peru's government expresses its inequity in denying and condemning the terrorist attacks perpetrated by Hamas on the 7th of October, as well as the use of explosives. In this respect, Peru emphasizes in a way staggering its denial of terrorism in all its manifestations, wherever it comes. However, we make a call to ensure that all the explosives are released immediately and without condition along with the urgent access to each of them and the medical attention. Madam President, the recent reanunia of the hostilities in Gaza after the turmoil is a tragedy. Peru urges all sides and states with influence in the region to redouble its efforts in a way urgent to secure an explosive launch with humanitarian purposes. Peru reiterates its firm and unconditional condemnation of all acts of violence and hostility against civilians and terrorism. In this context, we express our profound denial and condemnation for the recent attack at the hospital Al-Ahlaab in Gaza which has caused centuries of dead and wounded. International and international humanitarian rights are linked for everyone and should respect themselves in any circumstance. We condemn all the counter-civils bombarders and in particular against infrastructures, such as medical centers. The humanitarian situation in Gaza is catastrophic with almost a collapse of its sanitary system and with an increase in the risk of diseases for the public in all categories, including the increase in the risk of epidemics in Gaza. Therefore, it is necessary to guarantee a lasting humanitarian strike that leads to an explosive launch that allows for the full, rapid, secure and seamless humanitarian assistance as well as the provision of supplies and medical items such as water, food and medical supplies for the civilian population. Madam President, Peru exhort all sides to comply with the international right, in particular the international right to human rights and humanitarian rights. In this context, it is insurmountable the compromise taken in favor of the civilian protection, the humanitarian personnel, the medical personnel, the civilian infrastructure and humanitarian resources. Finally, in what relates to the resolution that has been presented for the consideration and adoption of this executive council, Peru supports it firmly. It makes votes to ensure that it can be adopted by consensus and thanks all the delegations who have been involved in the revision of the revised version. Thank you.
Thank you, Peru. I'd like to give the floor to the United States of America for a brief clarification, then France.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies. I understand some in the room may have misunderstood me earlier, so I am taking the floor again to clarify that the United States will support adoption by consensus. We will not be proposing amendments in the understanding that others will also not be proposing amendments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, United States of America. I now give the floor to France.
Merci, Madame la Présidente, Monsieur le Directeur Général. La France associe à la Déclaration de l'Union Européenne. C'est avec une gravité particulière qu'en ce jour anniversaire de la Déclaration universelle des droits de l'Homme, la France aborde la situation tragique que traversent les populations israéliennes et palestiniennes depuis le 7 octobre. La France salut le personnel de l'OMS et celui de tous les acteurs humanitaires qui accomplissent un travail remarquable. Nous adressons tous nos condoléances à l'OMS suite au décès d'un des membres de son personnel et de sa famille dans la bande de Gaza. La France soutient et continuera d'apporter à l'OMS un soutien diplomatique et financier. Nous avons signé le 8 décembre un accord portant à 3 millions la contribution supplémentaire de la France à la réponse de l'OMS. La France a d'emblée condamné dans les termes les plus forts les attaques terroristes du Hamas et d'autres groupes terroristes contre Israël le 7 octobre. Elles ont été le théâtre d'horreurs indicibles dont l'évocation choque la conscience humaine. Ces horreurs, qui incluent des crimes sexuels et des crimes contre les enfants, se poursuivent notamment à travers la détention de tant d'otages par le Hamas et les groupes terroristes. La France appelle à la libération immédiate, sans exception et sans condition de tous ses otages, et remercie le Qatar pour son action. Israël a le droit de se défendre et le devoir de le faire dans le strict respect du droit international humanitaire. Les populations et infrastructures civiles doivent être protégées. À cet égard, la France est très préoccupée par l'extrême gravité de la situation dans laquelle se trouve la population civile de Gaza, telle que vient de la décrire le Directeur Général de l'OMS. Une semaine après l'expiration de la trêve, la population est exposée aux bombardements, au risque des pieds des milliers de famine, au manque d'accès aux soins médicaux et aux conséquences des déplacements sur un territoire toujours plus restreint. Cette situation nécessite une réponse urgente de l'ensemble de la communauté internationale. C'était l'objet de la réunion de suivi de la Conférence du 9 novembre qui s'est tenue mercredi dernier, le 6 décembre à Paris, et a rassemblé plus de 50 États, organisations internationales et organisations de la société civile. La Conférence du 9 novembre, déjà organisée par la France, avait déjà permis de recueillir plus d'un milliard d'euros de promesses de dons. Nous devons faire plus encore tant les besoins sont immenses. Pour sa part, la France a déjà annoncé le 9 novembre 100 millions d'euros additionnels, dont 83 pour les agences des Nations Unies et le CICR. Elle apporte une aide humanitaire et médicale importante pour répondre aux besoins de la population civile de Gaza en lien étroit avec l'UNRWA, l'OMS et l'Égypte. La ministre a annoncé mercredi un nouvel envoi de frais humanitaires avec 600 tonnes d'aide alimentaire OPAM. La France soigne aussi des civils en urgence relative sur le porte-hélicoptère d'Ismoud et a permis à plus de 200 tonnes de nourriture, kit médico, médicaments et abri d'être acheminés. La France réitère son appel à une nouvelle trêve humanitaire immédiate et durable qui doit conduire à un cessez-le-feu pérenne comme l'a dit le Crétin Général de l'ONU. Enfin, il est capital de restaurer un horizon politique à la crise sur la balle de la seule solution viable, celle de deux États vivant côte à côte en paix et en sécurité. La France veut prendre part à ces efforts. Le président de la République et la ministre sont pleinement mobilisés en ce sens et poursuivent leurs échanges continus avec leurs interlocuteurs de la région. Madame la Présidente, face à la tragédie que vit la région, la France exprime pour conclure l'espoir qu'une décision puisse être adoptée par consensus à l'issue de nos travaux. Je vous remercie.
Merci la France. And I give the floor to Barbados followed by Democratic Republic of Korea.
Director General, Chairperson, Excellencies. Thank you for giving Barbados the floor. We are a new EBI member and Barbados is one of those countries that call for this special EBI session. We do however regret that this has to be one of the first issues that we are discussing, one fraught with pain and destruction. Barbados is a peaceful nation. We support and advocate for peaceful solutions, for open discussion and for decisions that place people, all and any people, at the center. We thank the DG and WHO Secretary for the presentations. We know that behind every statistic, there are multiple stories of tragedy. We take note of these statements from Palestine and Israel with a heavy heart. We urge all members today around the table that in spite of the extremely political and complicated issues at hand, we here in the EBI look at this through the lens of supporting the WHO to carry out its mandate under these difficult circumstances through our shared understanding that health is a fundamental human right. We must decide how we ensure access and how we ensure protection of civilians and health and humanitarian workers and how we put mechanisms in place to build back health systems, including around mental health and trauma. We ask all EBI members in the spirit of compromise and in despair of humanity on this day that we commemorate the 75th anniversary of the signing of the Human Rights Declaration to find a mutually acceptable landing zone that places people at the center of our outcome today. We believe that this resolution before us can deliver this. We hope to find a consensus. In closing, we also wish to recognize and commemorate all lives lost, including from the UN family. As a former UN staff member myself, this cuts particularly deep. People around the world are watching us today, including those in Israel and Gaza. We must deliver. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbados. And I give the floor to Democratic Republic of Korea followed by Malaysia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the outbreak of the Middle Eastern crisis on October 7, Israel has gradually escalated its military attacks on the Gaza Strip for over two months, leading to an extreme increase of civilian casualties. Most of them are women and children. Moreover, Israel's bombing of public health facilities, which should be protected as a top priority during peace or war times under international law, is an unimaginably inhuman and unethical war crime. Nevertheless, Trani Act continues to provide military support to Israel while opposing immediate humanitarian ceasefire with the absurd assertion that Israel's lie to self-defense was not respected and such driving and encouraging horrific massacres of civilians is the height of the same list of standards. For that reason, international committee is now strongly urging Israel to immediately stop the human slaughter. Madam Chair, the DPRG delegation would have this opportunity to make some remarks on the subject issue as following. First, we express serious concern over the current escalating situation and strongly demand an immediate ceasefire and put an end to the war crimes of Israel against humanity in confirming the way the resolution adopted at the Special Emergency Session of the UN General Assembly on October 27. Second, all parties should be fully complied with obligations on the international humanitarian and human rights laws, particularly regarding the protection of civilians, including humanitarian aid workers as well as the civilian objects. Third, we commend the WHO and its staff and other UN agencies for their tireless efforts to alleviate the situation on the ground despite the dangers of their lives while fully supporting the draft resolution proposed at the current session and is adopted by consensus. I thank you.
Thank you Democratic Republic of Korea. And I'll give the floor to Malaysia followed by Belarus.
Thank you, Chair. Our EBI member who is attending the meeting online will deliver the Malaysia statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Malaysia aligns itself to this agreement that will be delivered by Pakistan on behalf of the ORC members. Firstly, we would like to commend this material for calling to this special session pursuant to the request of EBI members, including Malaysia. This special session is indeed timely and in line with the recent call by the UN Secretary General to urgently address the situation in Gaza by calling for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire to enable the delivery of humanitarian assistance as well as adherence to the international law on protections of civilians. Malaysia echoes the call by the WHO and other UN bodies for collective effort to bring an end to the hostility and humanitarian catastrophes in Gaza. We are equally, we are equally worried for them the continuing atrocity by Israel. In Gaza, they have resulted in a high number of Palestinian casualties. As we speak, innocent lives at loss and children are occupied. Hospitals are being targeted and bombed in addition to families losing their homes and property. We would like to reiterate that Israel is continuing targeting of healthcare and vital facilities to clear the violations of 1949 Geneva Convention. Once more, we demand that Israel uphold the integrity of medical facilities in compliance with international humanitarian law. The international community must come together and act resolveingly in demanding their perpetrators to stop this madness, respect and support the mandate of the international organization and uphold the sanctity of humanity. Malaysia continues to emphasize the need to provide more secure corridors for the unhindered delivery of humanitarian inépuisable de l'humanité dans Gaza, y compris les fournissements médicaux, d'autres besoins humanitaires comme l'eau, la sanitation et la nutrition. La Malaisie reste en revue les causes de la peine palestinienne, prouvant un engagement de justice et de compassion et reconnaissant le combat dur de les Palestiniens dans leur lutte pour la liberté et la détermination basée sur la frontière de 1967 avec sa Jerusalem et sa capitale. Avec cela, la Malaisie soutient pleinement et souhaite de co-sponsoriser la résolution. Je vous remercie.
Merci la Malaisie. Et je donne le froid à Belarus, suivie par Japon.
Je vous remercie madame la Présidente. Nous remercions le Général et le Secrétaire général de l'ONU pour la donnée d'informations sur la situation en Gaza. Nous invitons le VOS à jouer un rôle en coordination et en fournir des services médicaux essentiels pour les victimes de conflits de nombreuses personnes. Nous invitons le VOS à participer aux missions d'évacuation en partenariat avec l'ONU et le Christ de la peau palestinienne. Nous demandons aux autorités respectives de s'engager de manière positive dans la situation de l'évacuation et de la sécurité de leurs habitants. Nous sommes perturbées par le nombre de victimes de conflits de nombreuses personnes, dont la plupart sont des femmes et des enfants. Nous souffrons de la mort de nombreux employés du VOS, des proches et des familles mortes. Pour Belarus, toutes attaques contre le peuple palestinien, des côtés et des côtés des parties adverses sont inacceptablees. Nous espérons trouver des moyens de rétablir le dialogue, de conclure une accord sur une pause humanitaire nouvelle. Nous soutenons les attentes contre la cesse de l'arc. C'est sans aucun doute un élément nécessaire pour la résolution. Pour résoudre les problèmes du Bref et Ouest, il n'y a pas de solution de force. Elle doit être réglée par des discours, sur la base d'une résolution Génèse, prévue pour le création de deux États pour deux nations. Je vous remercie.
Et je donne le froid à Japon, suivie par le Maroc.
Merci madame la Chaire. Avant tout, en ce qui concerne la situation entre Israël et Palestine, laissez-moi exprimer notre condoléance au passage d'un collègue de l'OEM, de nombreux autres membres de l'ONU et d'autres qui ont perdu leur vie dans les attaques. Nous extendons aussi nos sympathies à tous ceux qui ont été blessés dans le conflit. Nous n'avons pas reçu le rapport du Directeur général, Dr Terros et son équipe. Japon met en œuvre une attention attentive à la situation en Gaza. Nous sommes particulièrement concernés par le nombre de fonctionnantes et de fonctionnaires de l'assistance à la santé, le nombre croissant de casualités et la situation de détente dans l'area. Japon a accepté la pose de la lutte, la libération des hostages et l'augmentation de la livraison d'aide humanitaire à la rue de Gaza. Il est difficile de regretter que la lutte ait maintenant recommencé. Nous sommes conscients que la situation catastrophique humanitaire dans l'area va seulement améliorer avec la réservation des hostages. En plus, nous sommes conscients de la situation extrêmement difficile, d'abord par les hostages qui ont été captés depuis deux mois par Hamas et d'autres acteurs. Il est crucial que les partis concernés suivent les positions humanitaires établies et que ils escalèrent la situation le plus vite possible. Il est aussi essentiel de protéger les civils. Quand les opérations militaires sont menées, toutes les mesures possibles doivent être prises pour prévenir les casualités des civils. En ce sens, il est critique que tous les parties prennent en accord avec la loi internationale, y compris la loi humanitaire internationale. Autres besoins humanitaires et autour de Gaza, il est extrêmement important que les travailleurs humanitaires, y compris les membres de l'OEM, aient accès sécurisé à la livraison d'aide humanitaire aux civils. Nous exprimons notre sincère respect pour le travail fait par l'OEM de fournir telle aide. En réponse à la situation humanitaire, le gouvernement de Japon a décidé de fournir de l'aide humanitaire à 75 millions pour la Palestine. Nous fournissons aussi des tentes et des fournissements médicaux à travers l'agence internationale de coopération japonaise. Japon continuera ses efforts diplomatiques actifs pour communiquer avec les pays et les organisations internationales concernées avec un objectif de la sécurité immédiate de la libération des hostages, améliorant la situation humanitaire et restaurant la paix en Gaza et Israël. Je vous remercie.
Merci Japon. Et je donne le froid au Maroc, suivie par l'Ukraine.
Merci madame la Présidente. Monsieur le Directeur général, honorable l'Assistance, les conventions de Genève incarnent, comme chacun le sait, non seulement un idéal mais des engagements et des contraintes juridiques qui font que même dans l'hostilité la plus extrême, certaines règles d'humanité doivent prévaloir pour assurer le respect des droits fondamentaux et la protection des plus vulnérables. Ces textes sont également l'expression de l'engagement international en faveur d'une moralisation des pratiques de guerre et de la reconnaissance de la santé et du bien-être humain comme des priorités centrales inaliénables, indépendamment des conjonctions. Ce n'est malheureusement pas ce que nous sommes en train de constater dans ce conflit. Aussi, ayant à l'esprit l'obligation de respecter et de faire respecter en toute circonstance le droit international humanitaire, nous nous trouvons tous à un tournant décisif qui nous commande de la fermeté et de la responsabilité pour mettre un terme aux agressions et de vraies de concert à réaliser quatre objectifs principaux. Le premier étant la désescalade urgente et concrète qui passe par un cessez-le-feu et la libération de tous les prisonniers et les hôtages. Le deuxième, c'est la garantie de la protection des civils et des structures hospitalières de sorte qu'elles ne soient plus pris pour cibles. Le troisième, c'est l'acheminement fluide et en quantité suffisante des aides humanitaires, de matériel et d'équipements médicaux au profit des populations de Gaza. Et enfin, le quatrième, la protection d'une perspective politique, la projection, pardon, d'une perspective politique pour la question palestinienne de nature à renoncer à la solution urgente à deux États tels que convenus par la communauté internationale. Mesdames et messieurs, nous manquerions à notre devoir si nous ne cessons pas la présente occasion pour exprimer nos remerciements et notre très grande gratitude au Directeur général, au personnel de l'OMS et de tous leurs partenaires sur le terrain. D'être d'abord resté sur place malgré toutes les dangers et les menaces et d'avoir fourni des soins et de s'être efforcé de faire face à la situation sur le terrain dans la bande de Gaza dès le début, malgré les graves dangers pour leur vie, ayant pour certains d'entre eux payé le sacrifice suprême. Et aussi, de vrai sans relâche à fournir une aide vitale pour atteindre l'impact du conflit sur les civils dans les territoires palestiniens, y compris d'ailleurs la jurisprudence. Cela nous a été démontré ce matin par les différentes interventions des responsables de notre organisation. Enfin, nous formons l'espoir que la présente session soit couronnée de succès et qu'elle aboutisse à des résultats probants pour une mobilisation de la communauté internationale en vue d'assurer un financement approprié et de répondre aux besoins immédiats et futurs des programmes de santé de l'OMS dans les territoires palestiniens occupés et pour reconstruire le système de santé palestinien. C'est en tout cas notre lecture de la résolution qui sera adoptée aujourd'hui. Pour conclure, je réiterais la disponibilité du Maroc qui est un soutien indefictible et agissant du peuple palestinien à œuvrer avec l'OMS et la communauté internationale pour faire face à ces défis, promouvoir des solutions durables et renforcer les systèmes de santé dans les endroits de conflit. Je vous remercie madame la Présidente.
Merci le Maroc. Et je donne le froid à l'Ukraine, suivie par Qatar.
Ukraine, vous êtes en ligne, allez-y.
Merci pour le froid, Madame la Chaire, excellences, chers collègues. La délégation de l'Ukraine voudrait exprimer son profonde concernance pour les crises humanitaires débarrassées en Gaza. Nous offrons sincères condoléances aux familles d'Israélites, Palestiniens et, bien sûr, aux membres des Nations unies qui ont été tués, blessés ou captés depuis les attaques Hamas le 7 octobre. Il est worth remembering that the people of Ukraine themselves have been through un inevitable suffering due to Russia's ongoing war of aggression. The situation of civilians is particularly alarming and also has severe and multi-faceted impact on the mental health of affected population, especially children, youths, survivors of gender-based violence, persons with disabilities and older persons who are disproportionately experiencing traumatic events and other stressors involving exposure to violence and loss. We also reiterate the importance of ensuring respect for and protection at all times of all civilians, health and humanitarian aid workers and healthcare facilities. Hospitals and civilians must never be used as humanitarian shields. It is almost important to all safe and unheaded access to populations is need of assistance as well as to ensure the free flow of essential medicines and medical equipment. We call for compliance with international humanitarian law, international human rights law and OEM norms and standards. Merci.
Merci l'Ukraine. Et je donne le froid à Qatar, suivie par Slovénie.
Seigneur le Rès, Seigneur Maudia, les amis, les invités, le salut et la grace. Salut, vous, et la grâce de Dieu, et la bénédiction. D'abord, permettez-moi d'annoncer que je vais abandonner la loi de Qatar pour la violence qui change de la santé mondiale, en particulier la violence et les arrêts que le Dr Tadas et l'agence de travaille font pour lutter contre les maladies humaines et médicales dans les zones de prison et réduire les maladies des peuples palestiniens. Seigneur le Rès, nous sommes aujourd'hui dans cette époque d'extinction après des années de guerre dans la terre palestinienne hostile et en coulisses de risques de mort des gens et des gens. En particulier dans les zones de prison qui ont eu lieu après 17 000 personnes, plus de 3000 femmes et d'enfants. Plus de 50 000 personnes ont été blessées dans les zones de santé. L'affaire qui attire le cœur est que ces chiffres sont mis en place jour après jour devant les États-Unis et que nous ne voyons aucune violence ou force forte et efficace pour arrêter ces événements. Dans ce contexte, nous adhérons et nous soutenons l'objectif et la réparation des gens dans les institutions médicales et les véhicules sanitaires. Nous protégeons les médicaments et les médicaments hospitaliers et les médicaments hospitaliers qui sont utilisés pour les médicaments et les médicaments hospitaliers qui sont utilisés pour les médicaments hospitaliers qui sont utilisés pour les médicaments hospitaliers qui sont utilisés pour les médicaments hospitaliers. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Nous avons invité tous à soutenir les initiatives de l'Etat pour la santé et pour la santé des gens. Merci Seigneur le Rès.
Merci Qatar. Je voudrais donner le froid à... Merci Qatar. Je voudrais donner le froid à la Slovénie, suivie par Afghanistan.
Merci madame la Chaire, excellences, chers collègues. La Slovénie aligne elle-même avec la déclaration de l'ONU. Nous voulons d'abord exprimer notre appreciation et payer des tributs aux efforts dévots de l'OEM, de son personnel à tous les niveaux et tous les travailleurs humanitaires en Gaza, beaucoup d'entre eux ont perdu leur vie dans le conflit. Sincères condoléances à leurs familles et à leurs amis qui sont restés. Durant 75 ans, promouvoir la santé, garder le monde en sécurité et servir les vulnérables est le mandat clé de l'OEM. La réunion de ce dimanche porte sur cette responsabilité. La Slovénie se trouve solidarisée avec Israël dans le lever de l'attaque heinosaïque par Hamas le 7 octobre que nous condamnons le plus fort. Bien que nous déplorions toutes les victimes de cet événement outrageux qui a causé tellement de souffrance pour la société israélienne et encourage Hamas à libérer immédiatement tous les hostages, nous ne pouvons ignorer la souffrance des gens en Gaza. Le meurtre de civils, y compris un nombre extrêmement élevé d'enfants, les plus impolits et vulnérables, est aussi un acte heinosaïque et une violation claire et sérieuse de la loi humanitaire internationale et de la loi humanitaire internationale. Nous sommes profondément concernés par la bloquage en cours de Gaza qui a résulté d'une insuffisance sévère de eau de boîte, de nourriture et d'énergie, et de la destruction critique de l'infrastructure, entraînant le système de santé à un colapsois et, donc, endettant la population plus loin avec la possibilité de spread of infectious diseases. Nous appelons pour plus d'ouverture et de plus d'aide promptement. Les trous critiques de l'effet de réussite des femmes dans les services de santé, y compris les services sexuels et réproductifs, doivent être abordés urgentement. Sans exception, les hôpitaux, les fournissements médicaux et les civils à l'intérieur des hôpitaux doivent être protégés. Les fournissements médicaux urgents sont livrés et les patients en conditions critiques sont évacués sûrement. Tous les parties du conflit doivent assurer la sécurité et la sécurité des personnels humanitaires et médicaux. Nous encourageons tous les parties du conflit à compléter leurs obligations sous la loi internationale, y compris la loi humanitaire internationale et la loi humanitaire internationale. Les attaques sur le soin de santé doivent arrêter et nous devons essayer d'un cessez-le-feu permanent. Nous devons mener le chemin par la diplomatie vers une solution politique viable afin que les Israélites et les Palestiniens peuvent vivre side par side en paix et en sécurité. La souffrance des civils doit arrêter maintenant. L'humanité doit prevailir. Nous pouvons contribuer à cela ici et maintenant en adoptant la proposition proposée, la résolution draft, comme indiquée dans Rev 1, avec consensus. Merci.
Merci la Slovénie. Et je donne le froid à Afghanistan, suivie par Senegal.
Merci madame la Chaire, Directeur général, excellences, délégués distincts. Au départ, permettez-moi d'exprimer notre appreciation aux héros de l'OEM, d'autres organisations internationales et le système national des territoires occupés de Palestine. Ils sont les vraies campagnes de l'humanité de nos jours. Revenant à ma propre terre, souffrant depuis des décennies de conflits, je condamne la violence partout, à tout moment, peu importe la frontière géographique. Nous, les advocates de la santé, sommes unis contre toute forme de violence qui domine la sainteté de la vie humaine. Aujourd'hui, nous observons une crise humanitaire imprévisible qui demande notre attention urgente. La situation de santé dans les territoires occupés de Palestine, surtout dans la rue de Gaza, les preuves de sources irréputables...
الأدلة من الموارد غير ممتردة يظهر صورة ضخمة وضخمة لوضع الأمور الحالي في Gaza في الوراء على الرغم من طلب توقف عدداً وسلامة منظمة الصحة الضربات غير مقبولة على المستشفيات الصحية في قطعة Gaza التي تسبب تهديدات صعوبة على المستشفيات الصحية في قطعة Gaza الضربات على المستشفيات الصحية ليست فقط تارئة بل أيضًا تشكل تحرير واضح للقانون Humanitarian International المستشفيات المقصودة بمكانات العلاج أصبحت مهدفية عشوائية لكل الضربات الملموسة في Gaza هذه الضربات لا تؤثر فقط على حيات المصابين والPalestinians بل أيضًا على المظالمات الصحية المقدمة التي تعمل بجداء على الجانب الآخر، المساعدة البشرية التي تحتاجها لتعويض الانتظار تواجه تحديات كبيرة في الوصول إلى الذين يحتاجونها أكثر في وجهة التحديات التي تحدث أطلب من كل واحد منا أن ندرك الضروريّة من وضع الأمر لا يمكننا أن ننظر إلى الانتظار من الناس في Gaza في الوراء يجب أن نطلب من متفقية توقف عدداً ضمان حماية منظمة الصحة من المفترض أن ن advocate للنوع غير الممتر للمساعدة البشرية لتعطي سعادة للذين يعانون من هذه الحرب دعونا نجتمع في صارمة تمرّر من الحدود السياسية والفرق لعمل حملة م集体ية للصحة كخطوة للسلام بينما أدعم النصوص المقدمة أطلب من جميعاً أن يشاركون في يدنا ونضمن هذا القوى حماية infrastructure للصحة وتنقل على الفور المساعدة البشرية الأساسية شكرا
شكرا جزيلاً Afghanistan، وأنا أعطي floor إلى Senegal، ثم Maldives
شكرا مديمة الرئيس مديمة الرئيس، السيد General، أحسن الأصدقاء Senegal يشكر السيد General على تأكيد هذه المقابلة وحول نصوصه حول حالة الصحة في منطقة قاطع Palestine جنودي أهتم بالحرب التي تحدث بعد استغلال الهضلات في قاطع Israel-Palestine يهتم بشكل خاص بال情报 التي تحتوي على نصوصه ويحدث في ذلك الوقت، على سبيل المثال، فقدان أوعى كبيرة ضغط عظيم وضربات على بناء الصحة والمسائل الطبية ainsi que les conséquences sanitaires et humanitaires du conflit Senegal يدعو إلى توقف الهضلات وال尊敬 للقانون Humanitarian International لضمان حماية المvilliers المظالم الطبية والبنية ainsi que le respect international des droits de l'homme en particulier des droits à la santé de toutes les personnes qui sont sur le territoire palestinien occupé y compris Jérusalem Est mon pays appelle également à l'augmentation des entraves aux passagers immédiats et sans interruption de l'aide humanitaire y compris l'accès des membres du personnel médical l'acheminement des équipements, des convois et du matériel humanitaire dans toutes les zones occupées dans l'esprit de la proposition de création d'un fonds de solidarité en faveur de la population palestinienne et la reconstruction de Gaza formulée par son excellence Monsieur Matisse, président de la République Senegal engage le M S à assurer la coordination avec les donateurs afin de financer les besoins sanitaires immédiats ainsi que la réhabilitation et la reconstruction du système de santé dans le territoire palestinien occupé y compris dans la bande de Gaza pour terminer ma délégation encourage le M S et les différentes entités des Nations Unies intervenant sur le terrain dans leurs actions visant à garantir l'exercice du droit à la santé des populations vivant sur le territoire palestinien occupé et à leur apporter l'assistance nécessaire je vous remercie
شكرا Senegal أنا أعطي floor إلى Maldives، ثم Slovakia
شكرا مديمة الرئيس نشكر السيد General لتوافر هذه المقابلة المهمة في مجلس الإدارة الإجرائية في علاج طلب من 17 دول مضمون بما في ذلك الماليز نحن نعرف النصوص المقدمة من خلال الاعتبارات التي أشرت فيها السيد General ونركز على قدرة الأسئلة التي تواجهها مديمة الرئيس، ماليز متوهّلين جدًا بالحرب البشرية المحرجة في منطقة Palestine خاصة في Gaza نكره قوى المظالم軍 military في Gaza بما في ذلك المستشفيات هذه الضربات الممتركة مع الهضلات والمساحة pushed Gaza's Public Health Sector to the brink of collapse resulted in alarming civilian casualties and disproportionately affects the most vulnerable population especially children, women, and elderly The destruction of essential health facilities and ambulances and the tragic loss of healthcare and emergency workers underscores the urgent need for an immediate united response ماليز، نحن نكره أن قطاع الصحة ككل لا يجب أن يكون مهدفًا لالمعركة مديمة الرئيس، نطلب توقف عدداً نكره أهمية الاحتفاظ بالقانون Humanitarian International كما تم توضيحه في اجتماعاً جنوياً وبروتوكولات أخرى نطلب أيضًا مدخلات غير مقبولة من المعدات الأساسية إلى Gaza بما في ذلك الأدوية، الطعام، والكربون نقدر على جهود مجلس الإدارة الإجرائية led by the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia which also includes fellow executive board members Qatar and Malaysia in garnering international support for a ceasefire However, we as the global community must do more to deliver effective and long-lasting solution for the Palestinian people مديمة الرئيس الماليز يدعم ويدعم النصوص المقدمة في هذا الموضوع ونرجح الانتظار لعملات مبكرة لتعويض التحديات الصحية والبشرية الناس الماليزية تتوافر في صارمة مع الناس في Palestine في محاولةهم to achieve their inalienable rights بما في ذلك الحق في التحدّي نكره position that only viable solution to the conflict and peace and stability in the region is the establishment of an independent sovereign state of Palestine based on the pre-1960 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital شكرا
شكرا Maldives، وأنا أعطي floor إلى Slovakia، ثم Denmark
شكرا مديمة الرئيس أود أن أترك الإخبارات التي قمت بها للاستعداد ولكن أود أن أضع بعض التعليقات في قدرتي الوطنية Slovakia متوهّلة جدًا بالحرب البشرية المحرجة في Gaza الوضع indeed for civilians is alarming and the best testimony of the severity is the fact that the Executive Board is meeting unprecedentedly in a country-specific special session نحن نتسلل numerous losses of lives on both sides including killings of humanitarian and medical personnel and dead of the UN and we offer our sincere condolences أود أيضًا أن أصوّر أود أن أصوّر الأصليات السابقة في تأكيد المظالم الصافية على الأرض التي تقوم بها بعمل كبير Slovakia تكره في أسماء قوية من الترفيهات الترفيهية التي تؤثر على حماس عبر إسرائيل التي تم إجراؤها منذ 8 أكتوبر و هذا منذ أن بدأت الوضع تدهور في Gaza Slovakia تعرف حقًا الحق في защит نفسه في مكاني القانون Humanitarian International It is crucial that all parties comply with international humanitarian law including protection of civilians, notably children and we are concerned that hostilities have serious impact on hospitals its medical staff and patients While strongly confirming that international humanitarian law protects hospitals medical supplies and civilians inside hospitals it needs also to be stressed that hospitals must also not to be militarized and misused for any military activities Slovakia supports a sustainable humanitarian ceasefire necessary to address the dire health condition of the civilian population The immediate sustained and unimpeded passage of humanitarian relief must be accompanied by unconditional release of all hostages Before that happens, we stress the need to provide all hostages with appropriate healthcare And with this, I would close my remarks. Thank you very much
شكرا Slovakia أنا أعطي floor إلى Denmark، ثم Yemen
شكرا الرئيس أحسن الأصدقاء، Denmark تتوافق مع الإخبارات التي قمت بها من قبل على behalf of EU and its member states We're deeply concerned about the catastrophic humanitarian situation in Gaza and believe that it is right and relevant that the WHO discusses this dire health condition in Gaza Let me join others also in paying tribute and thanking WHO staff as well as all other humanitarian actors in their tireless efforts to provide humanitarian assistance to the civilians in Gaza We want to thank those countries who contributed to achieving a much more balanced resolution than the one which was first presented We would still have preferred an even more balanced text which takes into account the serious context of the conflict namely Hamas's heinous terrorist attack on Israel on 7 أكتوبر which we condemn in the strongest possible terms and the use of hospitals and surveillance as human shields And we also reiterate the call for immediate release of all remaining hostages taken by Hamas and the importance of ICSC access including to assess the health situation We regret that this context was not part of the resolution but we are ready to join consensus on the resolution given the urgency of the dire health situation in Gaza شكرا
شكرا Denmark أنا أعطي floor إلى Yemen، ثم تيمور لستي
شكرا سيدي الرئيس أنا أعد مشروع القرار المقدم لظروف الصحة في المناطق الفلسطينية المحتلة وفي البداية أستمحي أن أقدم بجزء الشكر والتقدير لسيد الدكتور تدرس على جهوده الدعوبة للوصول بجميع الناس إلى مستوى صحيح ممكن وكذلك الشكر والتقدير للرئيس مجلس التنفيذ وجميع الأعضاء لعقد هذه الدورة الاستثنائية للمجلس متمنينة التوفيق والنجاح الجميع السيد الرئيس، إن الجمهورية اليمنية تستنكر معاود الجيش الاحثلاً الإسرائيلي عدوانه على قطاع غزة والذي أسفر عن سقوط آلاف الشهادات والجرح المدنيين ونؤكد على ضرورة وضع حد لهذه الممارسة العدوانية والغير الإنسانية التي تجاوزت كل الأعراف والقوانين والعمل الفوري على وقفة إطلاق النار وإدخال المساعدات ويعاثة الشعب الفلسطيني وتقديم مرتكي هذه الجرائم للعدالة والوضع الصحيح في قطاع غزة متدهور وكذلك في الضفة الغربية وشرق القدس تم استنزاف النظام الصحي الذي يعياني من نقص الموارد والامكانيات وتعمل مستشفيات بما يفوق طاقتها بكثير مما يسبب في ارتفاع عداد الجرح والمرض والمدنيين النازحين الذين يبحثون عن ماوى لعلهم يجدوا في المستشفيات أو مدارس الأرنوا التي تتعرض للقصف السيد الرئيس، إن تدمير المستشفيات وعدم السماع بدخول المساعدات والأدوية والمستلزمات الطبية ينذر بتفشيل الأوبئة والكارثية كما أن الاستهداف المباشر للمستشفيات وقتل الكوادر الصحية وعتقالها وقطع الموارد الطبية والحرمان من الماء والكهرباء والوغود يسمح بتفشيل الأوبئة والأمراض المعدية نتيجة تقدّس الجثث في الشوارع كل هذا وذاك ينذر بمخاطر إنسانية وبيئي كارثية نهيك على الاعتداءات التي تطالل من شئات المدينة بما في ذلك القصف المتعمد لمقر جنة القطارية لاعادة العمارة ومستشفة اليمن السعيد في غزة واستهدافه المتكّر المكاثب للقوم المتحدة والأرنوا كل هذه الاعتداءات تعد خارجًا سافرة للقانون الدولي الإنساني وكافة القوانين والأعراف الدولية وندعو من خلالكم وعبركم المجتمع الدولي لمغادرة مربع الصوت أزا هذه الجمارات والمارسات ومنع مزيد منها إن الجمهورية اليمنية تقدم الدعم على ثلاثة مسارات ودعي إلى مساعدات طبية عاجلة ومسار دبلوماسي نشط ودعم البنية التحتية المدمرة للموشرة الصحية وحماية الكوادر الصحية كما تحتفلون اليوم رقم 775 فعلينا أن تذكر أنها نفس سنوات المعاناة الفلسطينية خمسة وسبعين عامًا من المعاناة فما حصل في سبعة أكتوبر هو دورة من دورات الصراع التي حدثت في الماضي وستحصل في السابق ما لم نتبع السبيل الوحيد لتحقيق الأمن والسلام في حل الدولتين هو إقامة الدولة الفلسطينية المستقلة وعاصمة القدس الشرقي وفقًا للقرارات الدولية هم أدارات السلام العربية ونحن نثمن ونعمل على دعم المجتمع الدولي لوقف العدوان ووقف الحصار والتمييز للعاجل والمناسبة للأضرار الناجمة على القصف الإسرائيلي لقطاع الصحيح على أن يأخذ على أقل تقدير تأثير بكل ذلك على شرايح الأطفال والنساء وكبر الشّن وندعو المجتمع الدولي للإفاء بالتزامية تجاه حقوق تجاه حقوق الإنسان والقانون الدولي للانسانين من خلال المشاركة بتحول اللعبة ويجاد الحلول الدائم لهذه المسألة
شكرا Yemen هل يمكنك أن تنتهي؟
شكرا
أنا أعطي floor... شكرا Yemen، أنا أعطي floor إلى تيمور لستي
شكرا مديمة الرئيس، أحسن الأصدقاء During the last few weeks, we have witnessed the most catastrophic health emergency in the occupied Palestinian territory as a result of these Israeli military operations The lack of medical supplies, food, water, fuel the rise of patients and displaced civilians have severely comprised the health system The devastation caused by this conflict to the civil population the majority of them women, children, and elderly is beyond measure and an urgent action is needed The lives that are lost, the number of families destroyed and the pain that will last generations cause my country deep sadness and concern The world is witnessing a grave healthcare crisis that urges international intervention and that is why we are here today in this special session Timor-Leste is here to support all civilians including those still kept hostages and humanitarian aid and health workers that are victims of this conflict مديمة الرئيس تيمور لستي firmly believes that the right to health is at the the core of the human dignity and we must do everything in our power to allow the exercise of this right The situation before us demands global and collective action We must joint efforts to rehabilitate and rebuild the health system تيمور لستي profoundly concerned with the recent escalation of violence and blatant attack to the civilians, schools, hospitals and health workers in the Gaza Strip in clear violation of both the purpose and principles of the Charter of the UN and of the Geneva Conventions and its additional protocols In this respect, Timor-Leste supports the proposed draft resolution We urge for a full, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian and medical access throughout the Gaza Strip We further wish to stress that parties to armed conflicts have obligations in relation to medical supplies and equipment as well as obligations towards the protection of civilians and civilian infrastructures including hospitals To conclude, we would like to reiterate our call for a long-lasting peace just and sustainable health and for the rebuilding of the Palestinian health system in cooperation with the WHO and other relevant agencies شكرا
شكرا تيمور لستي أحسن الأصدقاء، أهلاً وسهلاً شكرا لكم على اجتماعاً م reconstructive هذا الصباح هذا الصباح سنلتقي في 14:30 وأنا ممتن على رئيسة المكتب المعني بالمنزل، دكتور سبا التي ستدير المقابلة في ذلك الوقت عندما نعود سنستمر مع الإخبارات المضمونة من دول غير E B شكرا جزيلاً